Good morning, San Diego.[2.35][2.35][laughter] Good morning. My name is George Moore. I'm the B County Judge. I'm going to call this regular term meeting of B County Commissioners Court to order. Today is Tuesday, October 12th, 2021, at 9:00 a.m. We're physically located at B County Courthouse, Communal Courtroom Number 110, 105 West Corpus Christi Street, Beville, Texas, 78102. That was the call to order. If everybody would please join me in standing. Commissioner DeWitt is going to lead us in a small thread.
Our Father, thank you. Thank you for life. Thank you for bringing us on this earth to do your bidding. Bless this court. Move us in the right direction. Bless this county, bless this state, bless this world. Help us through all these calamities and catastrophes that are going on. We know you are there for us. We ask all things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas pledge, honor and respect this flag. I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one state, under God, one and individual. Thank you all very much. Welcome, welcome, welcome. We have several visitors in the audience before we went live. I said hello to most of them. There's two more in the back. Hello again. It's nice to see you both. Thank you for being here. Is there anybody who this isn't public comment that just would like to stand up and say, this is who I am, and I'm here, and anything like that, just briefly identify themselves? Okay, great. Thank you very much. We'll be moving on to Agenda Item Number Five, Commissioners Court Opening Remarks. If memory serves me, which it rarely does, it is Commissioner Lenny's turn to go first.
Very good.
All right.
Kind of quiet the last couple of weeks. I've talked, I got with Ray on some issues he took care of for me. Couple of people called wanting to inquire about what they need to do to also change the name of a county road, or a private road. As always, picked up trash and whatnot, just helping clean up the county, help clean up the city. Other than that, it's been normal stuff.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I want to use my time. One thing I learned in my training years ago is you praise and public criticize and product. And we have four individuals in this county that never, ever, ever get any praise. They're always working behind the scenes. They're working 24 hours a day, seven days a week. They're called out at 2:00 in the morning. They go to inquest. They have to go to the jail, magistrate folks. They've been on the front lines. They never complain. And I'm talking about our justice of the peace. We have contractors, Sherewalters, Zuniga, and Cantu. And I just want to shout out to these folks and let everybody know that they work hard. They're there, working for the county. They're doing their jobs. They're making sure that when DPS or Sheriff's Office or Department, whoever's involved, that they are behind them, they support them. And when you see one of these folks, give them a shout out. Give them a handshake. Tell them thank you. I appreciate them. And I don't think there's anybody in this audience that wants to be out at 2:00 in the morning viewing a dead body, waiting for the sheriff and everybody to get there so they can do what they need to do. But these folks do it on a regular basis. So thank you. I'll pay for it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Just a few things. I received a call from a sheriff deputy from neighboring county who has, lives out in off of 797, right out of back of Skidmore. And he asked me who repaired the sides of the road, which was Tex- uh, Tex did a preliminary widening of the shoulders, much to the dislike of most people that drive down that road. But I contacted Tex, and they were out last week, starting to finish up the side of that. It was just a preliminary repair, and they're going back to fix it. So he's also talking to Mr. Willow and I either later this week or early part of on the Silver Creek addition grants that's possibly coming from the GLO. So it'll be that one and a couple of other projects that I've seen that may fall under that too. So over from Corpus, we'll be going out to look at the site. I did notice Roden Bridge is now starting to mow towards the south end of the county. So that's, that's coming up. I want to thank Robbie for, for his due diligence in stopping the illegal 12 or 14 bags of garbage that we've been picking up on 628. I've not, I did not ask him his procedure, but the last two weeks, I have not seen any. So evidently whoever it was has been taken care of. So again, I appreciate him. I know Commissioner Lenny uses him quite often. He's very, another one that's very instrumental that works behind the scenes. So other than that, it's just been normal. Went down 610, looking at 610, the drainage on 610 and Corgan Road, working with Ray to prove that. It's coming along real well. Hopefully we could beat the upcoming rain. So but that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you all three of you all for your comments. I, I too'd like to, hopefully I'm not trying to steal your thunder, but just spill upon it. I'd like to echo the same comments of Commissioner DeWitt with respect to our JP's. It's easy for many people if you don't ever get a speeding ticket, if you don't ever have need, if you don't rent or, or have rental homes, small claims, the myriad other, if you're not getting magistrated out of jail, which hopefully most of our B County residents are not. You may not have cause to rub shoulders or interact too much with our JP's, but rest assured, they earn every dollar that they get paid, and then they put in a lot more time than most of the beyond that. So my appreciation to them as well. Thank you for bringing that up this morning. Thank you. Thank you all for your comments. One other thing too, real quick while we're thinking since, oh, thank you, man. In a thanking mood. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.[426.12][426.12][laughter]
Would you thank the county?
No, seriously, I don't think I said this because it was out with COVID when, when the budget was adopted, but I would like to thank all of our departments and elected officials. It was a very difficult year once again. Hopefully that's somewhat in our, in our rear view, but at least for this fiscal year, I'm not asking for input from this case too, but this fiscal year, I think it's, I think everything's good. And so I really appreciate everybody's efforts. And of course, Miss Ginto in our office, they're perfectly in efforts in getting this budget put together every year. So thank you all. I know it's frustrating and difficult at times, but I can't tell you how much I appreciate the professionalism and passion and the dedication that all of our folks who are tasked with trying to figure out what they're going to need for this upcoming fiscal year do in putting together what they think is they need and then advocating for in front of this Commissioners Court. So thank you guys for that as well. Moving on, Agenda Item Number Six, Public Comments. Are there any members in the public that would like to address Commissioners Court at this point in time? Okay. It's almost a rarity. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Seven, the following items are of an administrative nature. Commissioners Court has been furnished documentation on each item, and all such items may be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a Commissioner or a county judge.
Would you approve his presentation?
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? It looks, Ms. Ginto, like most of our--
Transfers, you'll, you'll still see into, into this new year that we're allowed to. Budget amendments, you will not see. But yes, we still are working--
Okay.
--with budget.
Okay. Well, it looks good. I know--
This is almost a housekeeping issue every year.
Right, at this point in time, yeah. And it's not quite done?
Not quite done.
Okay. Jumped the gun. I thought we were quite done. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you. Agenda Item Number, oh, sorry. Discussing, consider action on the following items. Agenda Item Number Eight, Approved Resolution Authorizing B County to Support B Development Authority's Grant Application Request to the U.S. Department of Commerce, Economic Development Administration, EDA, under the 2021 American Rescue Plan Act. Do you have a motion to approve, to approve the comment? I have a motion and a second. I have a motion and a second.
There are a couple of typos in the resolution, Judge.
Yes, sir.
And I'm wondering who is resilient design?
Well, why don't we bring up Mr. Sykes and Mr. Arisola, and they can give us a little bit more information. And thank you for bringing up. I know there's, I know there's one place for a CBA county particularly like that. Gentlemen, please identify yourselves.
I'm the Executive Director for the B Development Authority. The B Development Authority owns and operates Chaseville Industrial Airport Company. This is my colleague here. I'm Ray besides him with the B Development, or, uh, I'm for the B Area Partnership. And what was your, your--
Resilient Design, who, who are they? We don't, we've never heard that name before.
And they are coming out of, where did you pull that information from?
It's from the resolution. It says that including water, wastewater, drainage system, pipelines, and road construction utilizing resilient design.
Oh, designs in, in what we're doing out at Chaseville.
Is that a descriptive term, not the name of the entity?
It's not a company. Okay. It didn't, it didn't--
The company helping us apply for this is the Raina Network. They're out of valley. They'll be, they'll be in charge of this grant.
That answers my question.
And I can tell you that we've discussed over almost this past year that many of the challenges for trying to attract business into the area is either not having existing buildings or not having a pad-ready green space that they can put a shovel on the ground to begin to develop, to bring in jobs and investment. This grant will allow us to put in infrastructure and allow us to get pad-ready sites available so that we don't keep losing out on opportunities to get more companies to invest in the area. We have three right now that we're in negotiations with three manufacturing companies that are ready to put the shovel on the ground, but there's no infrastructure in this area. And this certainly would, would give us an advantage in future--
A couple hundred thousand dollars that BDA has asked for sewer systems. Is that included in this grant or not?
Yes. The 415 acres that the B Development Authority purchased this year is undeveloped. So there will need to be a visitation on that property, and I think that's what, what Commissioner Buddy has asked. But on your, on your note, yes, we talked to our grant writer, and we got Commissioner Buddy as being involved. And right now, it's best to be pulling from both. I know y'all's grant is going before ours. Ours won't be submitted until November. So if y'all get approved, we'll remove that from our grant.
Well, the thing of it is, ours is approved. It's just we need your information, some engineering information from y'all to send to our folks to see if we can do it.
Yes.
And we hate to tie that money if you're going to be getting it from a different source.
Yes. And, and that's the only reason why we kept it on our grant. We are in the process of getting the Raina Network engineer, the preliminary report, to Mr. Buddy. We've had, we've had two meetings already regarding that.
Okay. Because if you will, time is of the essence, because we're, we have a lot of projects we want to keep moving. That's a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Yes, yes, I understand. So I just wanted to get a $200,000.
Yes.
Do you have a time horizon on when we might be able to get that?
I can get to you by this week, this week, because they've been working on this last week.
Okay, good. And then from, from okay to start construction would be about how long?
For this?
For what, the one we're talking about, for the 200,000?
As soon as y'all get those funds available, I mean--
The funds are in the bank. I mean, all we need is your information and come back to the court and file approval. We say, go get the shovel and start it.
Yeah, because that's kind of entering what we got planned in the future, because we have companies ready, but the site's still undeveloped. So, so we'll get that--
Get that to Commissioner for this. You'll get it to the appropriate actions, as they say, go.
Yeah. And, and just to follow on with that, when you do come back, or when that gets back on the agenda, after we have that paperwork, the engineering design specifications, would it be possible maybe for y'all to come back with maybe maps and just, just to give--
Sure. I, I submitted to you, I don't know, we do have preliminary maps. I don't know if it got into your agenda. In fact--
It's not in our agenda.
It's my, this is, it's over.
Oh, wait. No, there is, there is one. This, the conceptual project layout plan?
Yes. There should be an layout plan, the resolution, and then the item of every possible we have.
Yeah, that's all, that's all--
Okay. Okay. I'd like to see, I guess, a little bit more on the, we guess we talked about the 450 acre, 415 acre site, maybe something a little bit more specific.
In addition to the sewer infrastructure and, and road improvements, you know, the, of the runway. And that, that'll be--
Um--
To help us to continue to use it as a--
But two, for the Texas Mile. So we've done three economic impacts now. The Texas Mile generates about almost $2 million day event that they, that they organize for the community.
Without the improvements to the runway, we are in danger of possibly losing the Texas Mile again. So we've got to make sure that we do everything in our power to make sure that the Texas Mile remains in place and active in B County.
That's correct. Didn't our Road and Bridge Creed disluc- paving, not as well as complete the paving out there?
In front of our administration office, they, they did a great job. So I spoke, I was meant to say during public comments, but I was, I was in my thoughts. I want to bring to your attention that, you know, on, on, on our credit to y'all, we do have labor county, Kennedy County, Jim Wuss County, Brooklyn County that are in support of this resolution as well. So we'll be moving forward with trying to get new wages, temperature show, like, well, referral, and arranges on board, kind of a regional economic grant.
And what are y'all paving the runway with?
It'll be hot mix, hot mix asphalt. It'll, it'll be done. 2009 was the last time we did that, that runway. Thanks, thanks for that.
Excellent. Any further questions, discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed? I'll be clear with you guys before we sign. I hesitate to--
Thank you.
Agenda Item Number Nine, Approved Texans Indigent Defense Commission Fiscal Year 2022 Formula Grant Resolution. Approve? I have a motion, I have a second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? This is Art Deli Housekeeping.
Looks like it's around $240,386.
Yes, sir. Uh, any further comments, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Agenda Item Number Ten, Approved Hart Inner Civic Verity Duo Paper Tracking Voting Machines Conversion Quotes.
Moved to approve. The total was $240,386.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do I have a second?
Okay.
All right. I have a motion in a second. Is there any, Ms. Warnick, is there any discussion you want to have on that? We've, we've looked at the quote. We have it in our document.
They're just, they're ready to do the tenants and collections over. They'll, they'll send down the boxes and send it up to them.
The only thing I noticed on here, on your general information shows expiration date of 9/30/21. Is that critical or not?
They, what they're doing, our licenses, we already have licensing with it. They're just providing it to, to match up with that license.
So it's not a problem?
The, the funds, the funds, because I believe we're going to have to put out for them initially and then be reimbursed. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And this, this is not budgeted.
Right.
So, um--
My motion would say if you take the money from an appropriate place.[1093.82][1093.82][laughter]
Where's the appropriate--
Ms. Warnick, do we have any idea what the reimbursement timeframe is?
Not at this time, sir.
It could be a--
I think the Secretary of State is still waiting to hear from the federal government. They're trying to use federal funds first, and then if they don't, then they will use the state funding. They, they got the quote from Hart, from all the counties that we needed to do this conversion, so they have a, an amount, and they, they know they're going to have--
My suggestion would be to do a budget amendment in contention of--
That would be my motion. Since you've already found the appropriate place. Motion be a budget amendment and a pension reimbursement.
We have an amended motion. Do we have an amended second? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I guess there's one. Probably should have moved to the end.[1154.66][1154.66][laughter] There's no further discussion. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Ms. Ginto. Agenda Item Number Eleven, Approved Annual Christmas Tree Lighting Events. Who's here to talk to us about this? I'm sorry, we have got a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
I've got a motion and a second. I thought that was a motion.
It was.
I didn't interrupt you.
Absolutely. No, sorry. You, you--
I don't want to start that kind of thing. Do we have a motion? Yes. Commissioner Lenny has not had a motion. I don't even need you all here.[1189.12][1189.12][laughter]
I'm just going to print paper cut out.
I'm sorry. Ms. Gonzalez, is there anything you'd like to present to the court? Nobody else, Commissioners Court, except for me, knows anything about what we're talking about right now. So let's give them the razzle-dazzle.
No, we had a meeting last week. Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing us to do this again. My committee is also going to be trying to assist with the Christmas tree lighting, the B Festive Committee. Of course, anything that we do will go through the judge's office. So we're super excited, and we think this is something that the community's really going to enjoy, and it's much needed. So, thank you.
Do we have proposed dates?
Uh, can be.
November?
Yeah.
December, I'm sorry.
So I guess the best thing to, to tell everybody, their seat, wanting to know what's going on.
Thursday, December 2nd.
Thursday, December 2nd, B County is reinstituting its tree lighting ceremony. We took a break last year due to COVID. Certainly, as circumstances change and situation worsens with respect to COVID, we'll, we'll adjust accordingly. But at this point in time, the committee feels, and I agree with them, there's something to not plan to go ahead and do this. It's something that the committee, or not the committee, that the community really missed last year, and it's something that we don't want them to miss this year. So I think the committee's working really hard to put together a lot of different pieces of the puzzle. They're working with the city. They're working with college. I'm not, I'm not sure. I'm sure they're working with the ISD. I know some of the individual schools as far as they have great plans, youth choirs, youth, maybe some musical ensembles. It should be a lot of fun. I've, I've heard there's a, a snow machine. They're working, they're negotiating with the North Pole right now, getting it early, because normally pretty busy. But, but I think they're planning on. And so, since we get out of the city here, thank y'all for, to the extent that you know anything about what I'm talking about.[1326.75][1326.75][laughter] We really appreciate the whole, the whole county, and obviously everybody in the city really appreciate, appreciate y'all's unreserved support and everything that we're trying to do.
We appreciate the community working on this, and we're just happy to lend support and help with coordination of, particularly in the downtown area with our Main Street program. So this is great.
Absolutely. Yeah. Thank you so much, Mr. French, and, and thank Ms. Gonzalez. So we have a proposed event, December 3rd, Thursday, December 3rd.
Second.
Thursday, is it Thursday?
Yes, Saturday.
Okay. Thursday, December 2nd, 2021, from six to eight. The event will take place on the courthouse grounds and on roads closed adjacent to the courthouse grounds. And if the parade can be put together and approved, that'll come through downtown. But with respect to, for our purposes today, we just need to confirm and approve that the event can proceed on courthouse grounds, Thursday from six to eight.
That's the motion, yes.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Any further discussion, questions, comments? By saying aye. All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, everybody that's working on this with us. Agenda Item Number Twelve, Approved Memorandum of Understanding Between the B County Sheriff's Office and the Coastal Dean College Police Department.
Would you approve the comment?
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Commissioner, or, uh, we'll get, Commissioner, you, you want to start with your comment?
Well, we need to add the signature to the contract.
Okay.
As we all know, no contract can be approved without the county judge's signature. If it's a great contract, just his signature needs to be added.
Sheriff's office made, or, or do y'all have anything you want to, I mean, with respect, not with respect to that, but with respect to the proposed intermodal agreement?
Pretty much a standard agreement. Actually, I thought that--
The MOU does have my signature.
Oh, well, just, just that you got--
Yeah, the non-terminal agency agreement. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's all that, too. I'm not sure what that is, but we get worked out.
Which non-terminal agency agreement is through us and the CGIS and TCI, NTIS, NTIS through two nets. That's something we have to, through state--
In other words, signature is appropriate. We'll leave it there.
Maybe the--
Yes, ma'am. And can y'all, if my last name has an i, I can change it manually, or if y'all want to change it electronically, that's okay. That's no problem at all. Any further discussion? You guys sure you don't want to present anything? You have one opportunity. I, I think. All right. Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Approved Expo Request for Auditorium for Pawnee Youth Booster Club Couples Bingo Fundraiser Event on January 8, 2022.
Moved to approve. Is it available?
Yes. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Yanto, would you like to make a presentation? We have your application. We have all the applications in our packet. But is there anything else that you'd like to share with Commissioners Court or with the public?
I just wanted to, um, just give you a little bit of background of what the funds are going to be used for. And we, we try to raise funds for kids that, for the livestock show auction. And so we're just trying to build our funds and so we can support the youth in the livestock show, show.
That's great. Are y'all a buyer's group?
Yes.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Yanto. Any further discussion and questions for Ms. Yanto? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Agenda Item Number 14, Approved Expo Request for Pavilion Rental Fee Waiver for Ballet Folclorico de Beville Practices. I have a motion. I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll take over the comment.
A motion and a second. Commissioner DeWitt, your comment?
Looking over the paperwork, they're wanting it from October through December for practices. Is, is that going to work? I mean--
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So what we've done is, we've, we've taken a look at the calendar. According to Mickey the times that they need it, we've looked at the calendar, and I've confirmed that it is available. They've actually been out there two, a couple of times already. I went ahead and I, I did get on file as normal a deposit that they would be using. I spoke with Mickey. I let her know because of the timeframe when she requested access, we didn't have enough time to get onto the agenda for, for last Commissioner's Court. So with the agreement that, and the event that it was not approved, this retroact, we went ahead and moved forward because of the nature of the event. I'd like to give Mickey, of course, after you guys are done voting, the opportunity to kind of explain exactly what's going on there. But I was pretty excited when I heard what they were doing. And so we wanted to be there for the kids. I figured that it would be something that the Commissioners Court would want to move forward.
That's, that's the bottom line. It's for the kids. I mean, that's the whole purpose of wine. The facilities are out there.
Yep. And we've looked at, we've kind of looked at all the wheels turning in regard to testing that's going on out there, food thing, all that good stuff. We don't see any issues.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Any more questions? Thank you.
Mr. Troy? Yes, thank you. I was, where can I find your last--[1688.25][1688.25][laughter] Mickey, and, and I apologize to your husband as well, who--
Oh.[1695.12][1695.12][laughter]
Totally unintentional. Would you help me dig out of this hole?
We're handing out some folders here. This is our Ballet Folclorico de Beville. Ballet Folclorico hasn't been around almost a little over 20 years, and so we thought we would like to bring this back for our community. The goal is to actually get our youth involved into expressing themselves in performance arts, like dancing and all that good stuff. We are working on an audit. We do have our certificate of nonprofit corporation. Would this take a while to get on yet? We do have an instructor who does come all the way from Victoria, and she is the only paid employee. Everything else that we raise, the money we raise, the, we're going to ask for, is all going back to our kids. A hundred percent of it is all going back to our kids. The reason why I ask for October to December is because we're trying to find something for our kids to practice. We are actually expanding Angel Here's Claptrap into making that into a little dance studio as well. And so it'll be an indoor little dance studio for our kids. And so we're pretty excited about this. Sergeant Greg Villar is also part of the committee. We have local people who have history of Folclorico that used to dance when they were little ones. And now the parents are teaching their kids. So it's actually really cool to see them out there dancing and practicing. I'm more than happy to go and watch this. It's a lot of fun. And maybe y'all can even, you know, join. It's, it's fun.
I'm not sure we dance too well.
I don't look good.
I don't either.[1786.82][1786.82][laughter] Let, let me throw something out there. And I look at this as a confidence building situation. Our previous county judge grew up in Ballet Folclorico.
He sure did. He sure did.
And the confidence and leadership that she gained, I'm sure through that helped her aspire and move forward.
And that's exactly what we're doing, we're doing educational, we're learning the culture, we're having all, we're not doing competitions just yet, we're projects. We are having them, you know, do reports. And we're going to have them speak in public, and we're doing all that, we're mentoring these kids, and then for that, they can pass it on, pass it on, pass it on, pass it on.
You know, this is similar to our 4-H folks, it's going in a different direction, but the goal is the same, build confidence in these folks and make great citizens, leaders, our future leaders. So I admire what y'all are doing, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Do y'all have any other questions? I thank y'all for allowing us to be here so fast because thank you so much.
And we thank you, Mrs. Crivino. Very good, Sergeant, it's great to see you.
Thank you.
Okay, a motion and a second, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. We're going to continue on, this is a still good part of the agenda. Agenda item number 15, approved expo request for arena fee waiver from the B-4-H Council for the B Jolly Showdown on December 18, 2021.
Move to approve?
I have a motion and a second. I have a motion and a second from Commissioner Lenny. Any further discussion? This one again is one of those great organizations, helps develop the youth of our community. And this Commissioners' Court certainly fully supports all of those efforts on part of the volunteers and the parents, and the children too, that put the time in to get this stuff together. There's no further discussion, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Gentlemen, agenda item number 16, approved Texas General Land Office Community Development and Revitalization Local Surfaces. Have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Mr. Willow, is there anything you'd like to present with respect to this agenda item?
I really do, yes.
Come on down.
Mike Willow, work in Management Department, COVID-19. This GLO grant is for the, for a grant, it is for a grant, and this is for mitigation plan that comes up every five years, and we're due for it. And why I'm going for this grant is because it's 0% buying, it covers 100%. Should we not be awarded this grant, then I'm going to approach other grants where it's a 25% buying. So where the grant, well, the government pays 70%, we would have to pay 20%. So that is why I can't believe all the grants are not forgiven.
Do we know or not?
We're asking for the max, which is $100,000. Five years ago, it was $88,000 was the total amount for the grant. We're hoping it's not going to get that. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Willow. Any further discussion? Good luck. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes without exception. Agenda item number 17, presentation on comprehensive plan and the process involved in developing such a plan, given by John Chen and John Benson, V-ville City Manager.
Well, we'll be quick, it'll take about an hour.
Take all the time you need, Mr. Benson.
Power point, screen coming in?
Yeah, no, we'll try to be as quick as possible. I'm John Benson, I'm the city manager for the city of V-ville. John Chen, our assistant city manager, is here with me as well. And I'm going to do the intro and then let John get more into the details and do the heavier looking stuff, because that's what I do, I delegate and stuff. The, so the city has begun a year-long process on a comprehensive plan. And so, we're here to talk about why we're doing a comprehensive plan, to look about project background information, the timeline, and then we're going to give you some homework each of you Commissioners and anybody in the audience that would like to. We have a little survey to give us, to build on the plan, or to incorporate into the plan, let the plan build on that. So first, what is the comprehensive plan? Comprehensive plan is a community-based, long-range, long-range, meaning about 20 years, plan that helps, will help the city make sound and coordinated decisions regarding the future growth and enhancement of the community. The, that sounds a kind of fluffy and all that, and I get that. It focuses on the physical elements, the physical growth of the community, including infrastructure. Jaime and Randy talked about infrastructure, and I know that's in Chaseville outside of the city limits, but that infrastructure there ties into the Chaseville Wayfarer Treatment Plant that the city owns and operates out there. So that's, that's part of that infrastructure as well as inside the city. It also focuses on programs and services that the city provides. It's been interesting to me, listening to other agenda items, if you talk about a program, we'd love to hear more about the organization because that's a program. How can the city help support that program? Or, Mr. Willow contacted me regarding the previous agenda item, we talked about that in this coordination between that plan and this, or this plan and his, and the plan he just spoke about. So the comprehensive plan is just that, it's comprehensive in nature. It ultimately lays out a vision, goals, and actions for the city to take over the next 20 years to achieve that goal. So the first step, as I said, we started, it's a year-long process, we're in the phase one of that, that process, which is community input, because it's really not about what John Benson thinks the city needs, or John Chen, or Doug Thomas, or even the council, or the mayor, what they think. Because it's really about what the community residents want, what are they, what do they see as the needs, what are they, their desires for the future of V-ville. And so, it's taking that, and then how do we achieve that? That's the vision, how do we get there over the next 20 years? So, so it's, so why plan? It's a setback from day-to-day operations, which we tend to get caught up in and consumed with at times. It also supports grant efforts and partnerships. The, the city of V-ville, B County, we partner very well, DAP, BDA, the school, BIS, the other school districts, we all partner well, we're working well together, and it helps solidify those. It also focuses our resources, in particular financial resources, on what to choose those visions, so we're not over here spending money on something that doesn't really ultimately get us to where we want to go. Or where, or so not, we, not lead the city, but lead the community wants to go. And then it leaves all these plans together. If we'll, again, talk to the mic, that emergency management plan will be incorporated aspects of that into this plan, so they support each other and they're coordinated in that fashion, as well as a lot of other plans. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to John and let him give you a little more detail on what's been about the plan up to this point, from the information we have.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. Good morning, Commissioner. Mr. Benson mentioned that this is only the first, we're getting into the fact finding and information gathering. So let me just point out a couple of numbers that the consultant has gathered for us. The first one is, our population growth is really minus. Based on the 2020 census, population of V-ville is only 13,669, which is only up about 500 from census 2000, which was 13,129. And on the flip side is, we are a young community, our average age is about 28.9. Comparison with Texas and United States, Texas 34.4, United States 38.2. That is a good factor that we need to consider down the road. And our homeownership, we have about 53.2% owner occupied. In more detail of that is, we only have 6% of housing, that was, that was built after 2000. So we have a 20 years that has not had a whole lot of new houses built in the city of V-ville. Now, go back to, the low point is that we have a higher poverty level. The community, median household income is $33,995, and the median home value is $72,400. In comparison with the state and the United States, the Texas median income is $59,000, and the median home value is 186. Comparing that with the United States, the median income is 62, and the home value is 100, uh, $217,000. So that is the best aspect we need to work on. As we indicated, this is only the beginning, we're looking at who we are, where we are right now, looking at existing conditions. It's tonight, the consultant's also going to present a presentation to the city council to get a further feedback in terms of where the future needs to be, based on the information gathered. This, this was, this is a five, five phases development of the comprehensive plan. The first one is about existing city, and the second one is plan direction. The next one is the future of the city. Then the fourth and the fifth steps will be implementation and the finalization. So as Mr. Benson talked about, we have to plan for the 20 years, but we also need to lay out both vision and action. So we can break it down into long-term, medium, and short-term, how we can implement all those actions to reach where we want to be in the 20 years timeframe. The last way, I would ask, as Mr. Benson pointed out, we'll give you homework, it's a survey, to get your feedback, what your vision is for V-ville. And we will provide a link on the city website as well, so any members, independents can also participate on this online survey as well. So here I am.
Is this open to any citizen in the city or county, or anybody that accesses the link?
Actually, that's a really good question, and I should have clarified earlier when asking, and just input. Where, where, in a perfect world, we would get input on this plan about the future of the community from every segment of the community. If we could get it from every single person, we'd love that, we don't, we obviously recognize that's not realistic. But the key is the, the getting input from all segments of the community, because then it represents, the plan will represent all segments of the community. As opposed to, we just get certain segments, it limits the plan, we're not necessarily, we could, the vision could be off, you know, in some aspects. And so, we've had input from the DAP Board, the BDA Board, we're going to be meeting with parent, or teachers, and high school students at the BISB, elected officials such as yourself, general, just average citizens. The thing we, we're trying, the challenge we're encountering is Joe's citizen that's not on the board, or not, you know, not able to be active, or, you know, for whatever reason, not active on a DAP Board, BDA Board, elected official, one of the committees the city has. You know, we tend to see the same faces in a lot of places, and we have that input and we want that input, but we need Joe, average citizen that may be working two jobs, and, you know, they're just struggling to get along, or make ends meet to anybody else, inside the city or outside the city. Because we recognize people's lives and where they shop and eat at and do those things, they cross the city limit line, doesn't matter, they cross those boundaries. So we're looking for all input from anybody and everybody to get that as broad of input as possible.
Thank you, and if they wanted to get online to try to find this, what website should they go to?
V-ville, excuse me, I should know our website, v-ville-tx.org, www.v-ville-tx.org.
So everybody, so everybody in the audience, please go online and fill out that survey, and everybody online watching right now, or somebody that, anybody that may be watching later, please go online and fill out this survey and tell your friends, share it on the interwebs.
Yes, the other thing, there's a, there'll be that link, we'll say, people, they can come back throughout this process and follow the updates and see the input, and whether it has, the plan evolves over that, through that link. So, and V-ville-tx is one word, there's no dot or anything between that.
Mr. Benson, if you will, we're going to make some copies and make sure everybody in the audience gets a copy.
No, great, yes, yeah, if you want to distribute it to all of your employees, and that would be, we'd love to have that, and then, I'm going to tell you where to return those surveys to, the paper survey.
No, he doesn't, but he can send them back.
Just drop it off or send it back to the city hall, and then it'll get back to John, so, so thank you for your time.
Thank you both for being, thank for everything you do for our community.
Thank you.
Is there anything further, any, we didn't have any questions, I don't know if the future said any questions, comments?
Just more than an action item?
No, just for the fish. Moving on, agenda item number 18, American Rescue Plan, ARP, Status and Projects. And turn this over to Commissioner DeWitt, you have the floor.
Sure, I have it pinned down at my desk, sir.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Can I have my office, did I give you one earlier?
I have, I have printed mine off, sir.
If you'll give a copy of this to the committee.
Yes.
This particular item, Judge, if you'll give me some latitude on how we present this and how we bring it before the court?
Absolutely. What we've done, in the wisdom of the court, a ARP committee was formed, and Judge, if you will, I think the missing is it might be to read what I've put down, to put it in the record and kind of explain to everybody exactly what's going on. Because it is, I'm not, I'm searching for a word here, it is dramatic in how it's going to affect a lot of people. So the ARP committee, which is the American Rescue Plan Committee, was formed by Commissioners. The committee members are myself, Chair, Commissioner Lenny, Vice Chair, Mike Willow was on the committee, but since his salary's being paid from that, we felt it might be a possible conflict of interest, so Mr. Castillo, Jaime Castillo, HR Director is in his place. Ms. Contu, the auditor, is a member, and Grace Yatira is a grant member, grant writer, she's a member. What we did, August 25th, we had a meeting in the Commissioners' hearing room. We, as a committee, put together an initial potential list, and keep in mind, we're talking about a little over $3 million that's been given to the county, it's in the county bank account. The list then was presented to the full Commissioners' Court. The court approves all items on that list to go forward for review with our consulting firm. What we wanted to do was come up with a list, anything we could think of was going to be on that list, but we didn't know whether it was projects we could actually legally do. So we put the list together, sent it to the consulting firm, we had several short, 10, 15 minute interim committee meetings right after Commissioners' Court meeting. On September 29th, we had a formal meeting here with our grant folks, with our consultant. Didi Adames is our designated contact, she was here in person, and her supervisor, the director, Mr. Fred Morris, we met with the committee, they met with us for about two hours. The meeting conclusion, all items on the list could go forward. A few needed additional information, bids, clarification, with exceptions of county parks, Skidmark, the lead-up Pawnee feathers, they were private, we couldn't find D's where they belonged to B County, so they've been dropped off the list. The $100 vaccination incentive, the committee requested this item be moved at the end of the list for further study and discussion. October the 8th, the committee met to discuss and finalize a recommendation Commissioners' Court for action. All items that I'm going to talk about today were approved by unanimous discussion and were finalized the recommendation to Commissioners' Court. The items I'm going to read were all approved to bring to Commissioners' Court for final action. Number one, and this was our number one priority from the day we started this, was to recognize our hardworking county employees that stuck through this whole thing, they worked through it, they didn't complain, they knew that the COVID was facing them in the face, they were there every day, they worked, they did their jobs. And what we looked at is premium pay for essential personnel, and the total is going to be around $800,000. And the recommendation that we have for the court is $4,500 for each employee, with an additional $500 for frontline, what I call tip of the spear employees. Now, what are tip of the spear employees? The committee came up with six departments that we considered tip of the spear. The Sheriff's Office, the jail, road and bridge, election, maintenance, and emergency management. They were right there, right staring COVID in the face, every day, every single day. Part-time employees to receive one half of full-time personnel payment. Anyone employed as a 10, 12, 21 is eligible. We ran into a little snag, we have selected officials we really feel like should be in this group, the JP's, the sheriff, or some, but there's a problem. In college, we call it a knotty problem, it's something we can work through, but we can't work through it right now, and I'll read you what's going on. Elected officials and auditors' offices require additional study. They appear to be prohibited from receiving funds. They appear to be prohibited from receiving funds by local government code, which is the rules and regulations, the laws that we have to go by. Since the salaries have been posted and are designated in the auditor's office via the district judges, they are in a gray area and cannot be increased, but relief may offer itself in next budget process, monies may be included as a salary for these elected officials and the auditor's office. The problem you get into if we went ahead and did this, being a gray area, if it's pursued, and that approval is subjectively rescinded by the federal government, the county would be liable for reimbursing of these funds. And no one on the committee is prepared to jump off into a deep gray area, not knowing how deep the water is. So that one we're putting on hold for further study. Number two, a fully equipped vehicle for the emergency management office for transporting and pulling the COVID medical trailer. They asked for two vehicles, the second vehicle's been put on hold by the committee pending additional information. One vehicle priced around plus or minus $87,000, and the committee recommends the design and type be approved prior to ordering. The committee agreed, $87,000 vehicle is not needed to pull the trailer. We feel that there may be a less expensive vehicle that'll do the same job. Number three, the COVID medication coordinator salary, plus the fringe benefits, plus or minus $42,000. This is Mr. Willow's salary, he's our COVID coordinator. Number four, 15 antimicrobial laptops for sheriff's office for a total of $114,000. The chief deputy has a paperwork ready to go, he's always on the ball. Number five, the revenue loss calculation reimbursement to B-County is pending, the auditor's working on our amount. In these funds, they will repay the county for funds, we lost, revenue that we lost during the COVID pandemic at the time. So that money will be coming back to B-County, we don't have a firm number yet. If it's $1, it's $1 that we'll get back, and I know it's going to be more than that.
And also going into the future, Commissioner.
And also goes, it'll keep rolling, as they say. Number six, storage tank for Skidmore Water Supply District, this is infrastructure, which is approved, on hold pending bids and tracking information, consultation with consultants to B-County be responsible for the oversight, and that's $450,000. We, we want to be sure we're doing this properly, because if something that we, it's like us being the people that are giving the grant, we're going to give a grant to Skidmore to put this water tank in, we want to be sure it's done properly, and we don't have to repay the money. So we're waiting for more information, I think the Commissioner that, for that precinct is working on getting that to the auditor's office now. Number seven, equipped SUV type vehicles for sheriff's office, total of $198,000. Once again, the paperwork is in, ready to order. Number eight, I will come back to that one in a minute, it's a new AOC building with a medical room, I feel we might need to go into executive session to discuss that, and we'll come back to that, Judge. Number nine, a body scanner for the sheriff's office jail with a temperature check function, $160,000, it's ready to order. What we have, if you've ever worked in a jail or sheriff's office, you have to ensure that the person that is entering the jail, jail cell, is not carrying any kind of contraband on their person, or if you will, in their person, and I won't go past that. But this body scanner will take care of that and possibly save lives and a lot of, a lot of headaches. Number 10, transfer to city of B-Ville, we moved that to the bottom of our list by the committee pending B-County project priorities, but it's still on the table. We want to be able to help our, our, our friends and neighbors in the city, it's all in the county, and we know y'all have a lot of projects that are probably going to need some help, so it's not off the table.
Thank you.
Number 11, plexiglass for county clerk's office, the project is on hold pending additional information, I think the county clerk was going to give us a better price, I don't think you have that today.
No, I was hoping to get with John this morning, but I haven't been able to speak to him yet.
Okay. Number 12, replace the sewer lift station lines at B Development Authority, that's infrastructure, $200,000, and it's on hold pending bids and tracking information, because we need to get with our consultants on it, because we're responsible for oversight again. Number 13, solar powered message board, trailer mounted, three of them, and cone setup to assist in directing traffic at COVID injection sites, road bridge, $79,000. And as a sidelight on that, we may need three vehicles to pull those trailers whenever we move to our next set of priorities. Number 14, updating the expo restroom, install water storage tank with all accessories, and install backup generator, this is all infrastructure, and that project is on hold pending additional information from that Commissioner. Number 15, a potable water storage tank in jail facility infrastructure, it's on hold pending additional information, may or may not be possible. And then, at the very bottom was the cash incentive for a $100 person for vaccination. Judge, do we want a motion for all, or how do you want to do this?
So let's, let's discuss, and in your, in your printout, you identified the ones that the committee believes are, that the committee are presenting for approval this morning, being items number one, two, three, four, five, seven, nine, and 13, and the only two that are not specifically set out as far as the actual amount would be items number two and five. Two is kind of a general range, and then number five, we just don't have that, that calculation yet. I'm not sure how, like if we, I don't know what we're approving on number five, when do we, when do we think that calculation? I know it's, it's going to be a rolling calculation, but when would we be able to first kind of get an idea of what that?
I know that Grant Moore is making time to come and work with me on that, so we can of course take that off and put it on when you're comfortable.
It's not that I'm uncomfortable, I just think it might be more proper if we have an actual number.
I, I agree.
I have no problem to approve, but, but as, with respect to premium pay, as it is right now, and with premium pay, there may be additional, we may be able to come back in a future Commissioner's Court, they just understand correctly getting on what further investigation can reveal about some of the individuals that, that, that at this point in time are left out of that bucket. The one trailer transport vehicle, COVID coordinator salary, 15 laptops for sheriff's office, three equipped SUVs for sheriff's office, body scanner for sheriff's office, three solar message, message boards, I didn't retain the motion.
I'm making a motion to approve item one, two, three, four, seven, nine, and 13, it's just read by the county judge, we'll come back to the revenue loss calculations when we have additional numbers, we can bring it back to the court.
Thank you, Commissioner, I have a motion, in a second.
I'll second that.
I have a motion in a second, I had a couple of hands come up in the, Mr. Garza, yes sir.
Just one, for clarification.
Ryan Garza, EOC Director.
Ryan Garza, Emergency Manager Director. Question on the emergency management truck, you said it wasn't, I, I didn't catch the...
What we, what the committee felt is, we need a pickup truck, three quarters ton to pull a trailer. We're not sure that, we need an $87,000 pickup.
Can I explain that real quick? It's not $87,000 just for the truck. That's including emergency lighting install, that's including backup cameras, bumpers, equipment that rolls out of the bed, of the back of the camper shell, that's radio equipment, that's not just the pickup, with kind of a turnkey, it's all in one, the company's handling all the install, graphics, all that is included. Just, just so y'all have clarification.
And that's okay, we've, we've, we've provided a range, the motion contains a, a range of funding available, so you can work directly with the committee, I believe, if it's the will of Commissioner's Court to approve the motion, then, and I appreciate you bringing that up and clarifying that, that's something that you can, you guys can work with directly with the committee, and maybe when we get that price finalized, then y'all commit forward.
Right, but you know...
Unless anybody has an objection.
No, get it, get it all together, and let us know, we'll have a committee meeting to take a look at it, and say, well, that's, that's pretty good, or what, where.
Yes, ma'am.
Kathy Stansfield, I was just wondering, on the $100 incentive for the truck, is that from today going forward?
That's why it's not approved.
It has not been approved yet.
It's not being approved today, because the thing you get into, well, I've had three shots, do I get $300? Or I'm going to go get some more shots, so it's, it's, it's on the list, but it's way down, there's further discussion needed.
Okay, thank you.
A lot of discussion needed. Because...
Do you have any other, any further discussion with respect to the motion second that I'm pending?
Yeah, I, I just, there's a lot of information that's still needed on a lot of this stuff, so I just, I didn't, is there a real rush to get this all done, or is it just allow it to move forward?
There, there is. We only have a certain amount of time to spend this money, and especially the pay for the essential employee, that can be done today, and it can be in their bank account.
Right. Which ones, Commissioner, are you concerned?
Well, I don't know, I just, I'm just looking at, you know, we're waiting, what were the numbers of the ones we're approving, again?
Number one, uh...
It's on that, it's on the page, right there, people, right there, right there, throw it to Bob.
One, two, three, five.
No, we, we're coming back to five.
Except five, because I'm going to get more revenue.
Oh, except five, I see that.
And seven, nine, and 13.
The total max out is about 1.5.
Right. And, and we need more projects brought to the committee by departments. I know one of them is in your precinct, Commissioner.
Yeah, I know, and there's still information needed on that.
But $450,000.
Yes.
But there's, there's money to cover that.
I understand.
Judge, I'll call a question.
I have a motion called a question, in a second.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
One opposed, motion passes three to one. On the motion, and the second on the underlying motion to approve one, two, three, four, seven, nine, and 13, that's set out in the handout presented by Commissioner DeWitt this morning on agenda item number 17, and we have a motion in a second, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
One opposed, motion passes three to one. Thank you, gentlemen. Do we have more to discuss on this agenda item?
No, sir, we'll have, probably next, Commissioner Court may have more information.
Okay, do you want to just pull out on, on agenda item, not agenda item, but the funding item number eight at this point in time? You had wanted to, you had requested, considering going back, just at a future date, or?
I, I would like to do it today. Okay. One, this, while, while, because it's still here.
Okay. I'll tell you what, we're going to, well, just, y'all just watch me, very closely. Could have been more prepared for that. I promise this all makes sense in a second, if it doesn't make sense to those of you that are... At this moment in time...
It's real estate.
Yeah, I just got to find the number, there we are. Okay. Public notice is given that the B-County Commissioner's Court may like to go into executive session anytime during the meeting to discuss matters listed on the agenda pursuant to the authority granted under Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Immediately before any executive session, the specific section or sections of the Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, that provide statutory authority will be announced. Upon completion of the executive session, the Commissioner's Court may, in an open session, take such action as appropriate on items discussed in an executive session. At this moment in time, under agenda item number 18, I'm going to take Commissioner's Court into closed executive session, I'm proceeding under Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, Section 551.072, deliberations about real property. The time is 10:07. I thank you all for your presence here this morning, there's more excitement to follow once we get out, so while you have to leave at this particular moment in time, you can come back, so don't go far. The individuals that will remain in, in executive session this morning will be the commissioners and the ARP committee members, so they can discuss with us freely those issues regarding real estate. Thanks.
Come on.
Thank you.